There's a lot of yelling.
Oh, yeah.
Who's your team?
RC.
Oh, okay.
It was a Marshall River.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, good. Congratulations. That's always five when your team wins.
Yes. No.
You can take that clip off. It just pops off.
Thank you. There's my signature.
Hello. So it was shorty the two minutes. I have to go into the bathroom.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That works. Good afternoon. My name is DJ Ambush and this is Morgan Jones. We are news of my fiance. That felt great. We don't get to. We have a little thing we do every Thursday morning on X-Ray FM from 7:30 to 9:00 AM. We're doing the local news coverage, regional, you know, national, international, and we don't get to hear the claps. So this was great. This is great.
You do get text messages. Those are not applause.
Right. Right. Same. So thank you all for coming out and joining us. Really, really excited about today here at the Levin Community Center. It's gonna be amazing. I know it. I just feel it in my bones.
I mean, it's a packed house, so definitely.
Yeah, thank you.
A quick shout out and thank you to Chris Olson. I don't know where he lives. Oh, okay. Hey, friend. For creating this, for getting this or getting it off the ground and to Tim and Kip for running with it and making all of this happen.
Absolutely.
We are super excited to be here and honored to be your emcees for the next few hours.
Yeah. Yeah.
As we grill the candidates. That's what we're, that's it, right?
That's the part I'm most excited about.
Deposition.
Yeah.
I didn't see the spotlight that we get to like put in their face, but I'm sure Chase will bring that out when it's time.
It's in the hallway. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Okay. So this will be broken up into three rounds. This first round, we have Debbie Kitchen, John Middleton, and Ruben Berlin. I guess the same need to applause for that. Hold your show. Hold your show. To be clear, this isn't need to be all formal, guys.
Yeah.
Okay? This is one of those situations where it's like, please, please, wait till the end and do what you want. In the second round, we have David Burnell, Brooklyn Sherman, Mariah Hudson, and Jennifer Park. In which myself and Morgan will be moderating that one. And in the third round, we have Mark Coller, Christopher Olson, James Armstrong, and Laura Stripe. There we go. And then we'll be opening it up to questions from the audience from you guys at 5:30. So.
So stay here, stay engaged. Turn your phone off. Thank you. Because you'll get to ask questions at the end of it and you will want to, you will want to be a part of that. I know that because you're already here.
Exactly.
Again, big huge thank you to you guys for being here. It, you don't have a constituency to represent. You don't run for much, so thank you for being here and thank you for being engaged in what is happening with our local politics and the change in government.
Yes. And shout out to everyone that is at home watching us on YouTube.
Oh, yes, the YouTube.
You're equally as important. I don't know if we're monitoring questions in the chat, you know, but shout outs for, you know, tuning in and spread the links. Just keep sharing and sharing.
Shout out to X-Ray for making all of the video happen, the audio, the video.
Squad, squad, squad. Squad, squad, squad. Love X-Ray.
Make it all the love.
We'll turn it over to Tim and Kip.
Tim and Kip.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Tim. This is Kip. We are with Progress Portland Podcast, also kind of a loose thing. What do you call Progress Portland? What is it?
That was violent.
Yeah, they said it'll be a little settling.
Yeah. So the Progress Portland Podcast is a way for.
No, no.
No, towards me? Okay. I'm new to this whole mic thing. The Progress Portland Podcast is our passion project to talk with progressive candidates from around Portland and try to find people who are matching a certain set of core principles that we believe need to go forward, equity, opportunity, inclusion, funding, things that have been traditionally neglected, and give them an hour or so to talk about what they need to do and hopefully have you guys listen and say, yeah, I really like that guy and maybe, and whatever it's gonna be. So progressportland.org. We're also on Instagram and Facebook and we don't do Twitter. So, yeah, check us out on social media. We have some little cards if you can't remember all that.
And before we get started with this first round, which is gonna be 20 minutes because we've got three people, the next rounds, two rounds will be four people and they'll be 25 minutes each. So we figured it was better than having 10 people up here trying to, 11, trying to field all the questions. So, but before we get started, just a quick review of why we're here and why this is important. As you all may know, charter reform was passed in 2022 and government has been gearing up to a complete sea change in how government works in Portland, which will be four districts, each with three candidates who will be beholden to their districts rather than the current system, which is five at-large city councilors who don't have to report to anybody and are in charge of running departments in a way that has now been shifted to a city manager, taking that political aspect out of the equation and making your city councilors more responsive to you, the citizens of your district. And then the other important part of what happened there is that is ranked choice voting. And of course, I've left that for you to describe.
Oh, great. Thank you.
That's the more challenging part.
So ranked choice voting really isn't that complicated. It's definitely different for Portland, but essentially you get to choose up to six candidates in your district that you want and rank them in order of importance. Only three candidates will win, but if you've ever noticed some of the previous elections, sometimes you're like, really like a person, like this person, but not as much and you're like, I have to, or maybe equally, you have to make a choice. So what you can do is select up to six people on your ballot and say, I like all these people. This is my first choice. This is my second. This is my third. When it all comes down, all those numbers will be tabulated and the top three vote-getters are going to be your councilors. It, everybody says it's complicated. It's really that simple. I think most people can handle it and it is a much more equitable way for people to get elected. You don't have to massive war chests to do stuff and it allows people to vote their conscience, which we don't get to do too often. So really excited for it.
And speaking about the war chest thing, everyone we're interviewing tonight has signed up to be for the small donor election program. And so we invited everyone across the board who had signed up for that. Dan Ryan announced on the 29th, so we did invite him and he had a conflict, so he was not able to be here with us today. And there's a couple of other candidates running who we, we did invite everybody who had signed up for small donor. Couple of people weren't able to make it. So with that, let us begin our first debate here. Putting a timer on and we will, we'll get started here. That is, we don't have half an hour. We have 20 minutes. That's what I said. Great. Kip, do you wanna take the first question?
Yeah, sure. So first question I'm gonna ask Debbie. Really curious about your history with Energy Trust and some of the challenges. I used to live five blocks from here and I'm also still currently in District Two in Roseway. How do you see being on city council where energy and use and the equity aspects that are very challenging to us? How does that fit into this district and what do you think you can advocate for?
Well, I think it is, you know, one of the most important issues that we're facing, climate change, and most of the climate crisis is caused by our energy use. So it's a key part of, and it's energy use in buildings, energy use in business like industry, energy use in transportation are the primary areas. So when I was on the board at the Energy Trust, it was almost a startup. It had only been in existence for a couple of years and then developed programs to bring energy efficiency and renewables throughout the state. And my experience with that taught me that you can roll out, right now their budget's about 200 million a year statewide and it taught me that you could, that one of the best ways to approach issues is to start at a pilot stage, then test the program, come back, revise it, and then, you know, then go ahead and roll it out at a higher level. And so they've been able to achieve huge energy savings and renewables and they have taken on equity as part of their values. And it is something that they've been working with, you know, both on their staff, but in community outreach and working through community organizations. So it's important when you wanna reach communities of color that you focus on organizations that are managed and run by the communities themselves. And that has been the approach that Energy Trust has been using in order to try to better communicate and bring these programs to more people. And I think it has, they're starting to make some inroads in that, but it has been a struggle. And part of the problem is Energy Trust is constrained in, it's the legislation that created it, to only invest in projects that are, you know, cost effective. And so sometimes they can't take into other accounts like things like ability to pay and other things that can, you know, affect whether people participate in the programs or not. So they're working, partnering now with other organizations that can bring some of those other elements in terms of ability to pay into the program and they're achieving better results now.
One quick follow-up on that. Do you feel like as, if you get elected, that there's an avenue to help your district out with those programs? How with, can you influence that, do you feel?
I think, well, going along with that is the Portland Clean Energy Fund, which voters passed and has been a program that can partner well with Energy Trust funds. And I think that's just part of my commitment is let's bring together, we have so many different sources of funding that come from the federal government, from the state government, from utilities, from our, you know, the city Portland Clean Energy Fund. Let's bring all those together and figure out how to leverage them more and bring the results to everyone and to increase the participation. You have to have data. You have to measure the results. You have to evaluate the results, but that's the only way you know if you're reaching people.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. So once a sound guy, always a sound guy. Can we, we're getting a little ringing. If the people who are near the speakers could maybe tilt them out just slightly, I think that would help. And if we could get the two mics on the stands off, I think that might help too. Great.
Expertise.
Moving on. So John, I wanted to talk to you. Your, I went to your website, looked around. It is early in the campaign. A lot of people haven't really put together a lot of policy positions. So trying to get to know you, get a sense of what you stand for. You talk in your website about the importance of being a collaborator and listening to the process. That's wonderful. I do think that is so important for a city councillor. But maybe, maybe if you give us a sense of what you think the priorities of city council should be, if, say you were elected and got started, what would your priorities be getting started up?
Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you for speaking and your existence, my election. Now, on a serious note, I do move a little bit slowly. I want to learn and understand and get a real sense of what's going on because I just think reactive is not the way to make decisions. Once you figure out where you're at, it's time to go full speed. If I was in control, I would take a real hard, serious look at everything we have and especially with auditing. And I'm not just talking about where the money goes because Portland deserves to know where their money goes and that's important, but also the operations of the systems that we have in place. I think that's very important. We could probably find a lot of money there and a lot of space to become more effective. I also feel that, and it's again, very clear and obvious, I am a black man and I'm sitting in a room of white people in a neighborhood that used to look like me. This city was never made for me or anyone that looks like me. And with intersectionality, that translates to everyone that doesn't look like the people it was made for. So in order to create a better Portland, we need to start looking at all of our policies that we have and procedures that we have, even down the language that I've read on the city government website. And we need to run it through a lens of equity. And we are a part of GARE, the Government Alliance of Racial Equity. We have an office. We spoke to them. They said they'd be willing, if I was elected, they'd be willing to talk to us about anything. Those of you who don't know what that is, I suggest you look it up. But it, if we can start with that, we create a more level, equitable playing field. And that's where I would like to start. But I don't, I don't believe that Portland wants to continue to just be a performative liberal city. I feel that it's time for us to start walking that walk. We've done the talking and I will say this out loud. I ended up having double foot surgery right when the George Floyd thing kicked off, so there was no way that I could go and march or protest or use my voice to express my frustration. But I will say that I appreciated how Portland showed up. And that was the first time that I've lived here that I felt like Portland gave about, cared a little bit about someone like me. So I'm hoping to that we can use this amazing opportunity we have to restart our government. We have great people working in the city. Our city employees are working hard and they're doing the very best they can. We need to allow them and give them the tools to do their job better. And I think starting there is kind of where I want to start. I hope that answers your question, Tim.
It does. Yeah, thank you.
Right on. Let's move on to Ruben.
Yes. So going through the notes here, you've worked as a mortgage officer. You've worked in nonprofit connecting individuals and families facing houselessness, mental health, addiction, and domestic violence to services. You talked about reinvesting in public safety. I'm wondering, can you expand on that? What does that mean to you, reinvesting in public safety and taking your experiences in a varied career and connecting that as somebody who would be representing District Two?
Great. Yep. Thank you so much. Thinking about it, I want to, I want to say encourage that everyone here in this room and the candidates throughout the city, there's a diverse amount of people and I think the more people that participate, period, this is gonna be a better process. Taking my experience, when I first started in, fresh out of college, I came here, I've worked nonprofits and it is tough work and you work for little and the emotional toll can be great and the need is endless. That continues to be the model today. Unfortunately, you know, those people, the long-term workers are the really tough ones and the people that work come every day and try and earn a living and make their own keep while helping others, they do good work. Eventually, when I moved into finance, I continued to see people struggle to buy homes, to run their businesses, you know, in the banks and everything. They have, they have services for that. But putting those two together to really help the people of this city and move forward, I think we need to have compassion for those that aren't able to help themselves and we need to be able to do that. And then we need to be mindful of the costs and how we can effectively do that.
It's a big question.
Yeah, yeah. It's a lot to think about, the whole totality of things. What I would really like to see is, you know, we continue, I believe, finally the best stages of the past city council, they're on the right track. The state is coming in, the county's coming in, finances are coming in. There's large talk of amount of dollars that are gonna be spent here in Portland and the state to do housing, to do mental health. I think we need to make sure that those beds for mental health come into effect. I think, you know, Portland hiring their own psychologists or mental health teams could go a long way. Most of all, with the new city council, I want to stress how important it is that we're finally getting local control. Each district is going to be accountable with three, with three people. It's gonna take seven people to do anything, to set the priorities for the city council, to set the budget, to make sure, you know, that the mayor and the new city manager keep on track and actually are being effective themselves. We've seen with Measure 110, how quickly progress can be taken away. And so an effective city council being effective starting January 2025 is gonna be really important. We don't wanna see this new system be curtailed or taken away simply because people don't have the patience for it. And if it's not effective and if it's not run well, then people are gonna rethink what the city government's gonna be pretty quickly, as we've seen.
Thank you. We have eight minutes left and I wanna be sure we get a second question for everyone. Debbie, I wanted to ask you, you've worked for the past 27 years within a small general contracting business. What has that taught you about housing and homelessness in Portland and how to improve the situation?
Thank you. I think one of the things about running a small business is you have to, you know, you have to work according to your values and your vision, but at the same time, you have to balance the needs of different people. So there's your employees, your customers, the company itself, it has to, you have to make sure that it can survive. And in doing that, balancing the interests of different people within the company, you, while still following your vision and values, you can be successful over time. And so I think that's one of the key lessons for me is learning how to do that, how to, you have to make both short-term decisions because you need to stay in business till the next day or the next quarter, but you need to also do the things that help your business survive in the long term. And so that's also very similar to what happens with, you know, our local government, being able to make both short-term decisions that address the urgencies and the crises that we're facing, but at the same time, lay the groundwork for long-term progress and long-term, you know, success. So I think that's the main lesson that I've learned, you know, and I agree with what John said about the employees that we have in the city, you know, the ones that I've worked with have been phenomenal and they work really hard and they are smart and creative and they deserve a system that works and they deserve that their, you know, efforts can help build a better Portland because most of them are there doing that. They're working on that every single day. And so, but at the same time, you have, you know, we'll have our district and we'll need to represent them. So it's about that balance, taking interests of different people. Not everybody agrees. I feel like I have the skills to try to bring that balance, stay in the conversation, stay in the table and keep people working towards a common goal. And you do have to, you do have to get your values and your goals, some agreement about that. We often disagree mostly about the strategies. I think there's a lot of commonality in Portland with what we want for our city and I just think that that's, you know, we can keep working on that if we can work together. And we need to work together, not just with, within the city, but between cities in the region, with our state legislators, with our counties. It just floors me when I go to regional events. I've been very involved in economic development events for the region and Portland sometimes is absent, you know, the mayor isn't there. The mayors of the other cities are there in the region, you know, so we need to be at the table. We need to be collaborative.
Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Wanna find out a little bit more about Community Warehouse, how you're involved, how you helped them? Really very, I researched Community Warehouse. I love the work they do and I wanna learn more about how you involved yourself in solving some of their problems.
All right. Thank you for bringing that up. And for all of those of you that are listening, I will shamelessly plug, if you have used furniture, mattresses, sheets, pots, pans, silverware, anything like that, please take them down to the Community Warehouse. Don't throw them in our dump and we will pass those on to people that are just getting into homes. I was a part of a business organization and as we all know, everyone is very interested in DEI. So my name came up and was put forth for the board. And I don't mind. It didn't bother me. Went in there and they were actively trying to change how their board looked. And so they brought me in because I was in the transportation industry and they had a real problem getting the furniture to the clients. So that's my direct involvement. I'll try to move so I don't.
Just take it out of the oven here.
I'll do that.
Yeah. Great.
I feel like one of those TikTokers who walk up to people. I'm working with technology. So I created a plan, or a plan to actually hire an independent contractor and work with them for services and now they have a reliable source of delivery for that warehouse. It's been fantastic. When I came on, they had an interim executive director and I decided that I thought she was the person for the job and she has done nothing but excel. And we are growing. We are starting to get government money, which is amazing. And then it's, I volunteered my time there. I've made a lot of deliveries, gotten on the truck, got up in the morning and hauled furniture around all day. And when you walk into someone's home that they just got and you see a pile of clothes on the floor and that's where they and their kids have been sleeping, or you walk into someone's house and you ask them, how long have you been here? And there's nothing in it. And they tell you, oh, no, I've just been staying on the street because I don't got But bringing in that furniture, it creates a home. And this is when I talk about being equitable and being like, we need to think about the whole problem and the entire solution. Putting someone here because you don't like seeing them over here, putting them in this temporarily. Yeah, we can get them into a house, but no one's gonna go there. I've seen it. They don't, they won't go. There's nothing in it. These are the kind of things that, it just reinforced that idea that I had that like we can do so much better. And so, yeah, it's been a wonderful thing to do. I love it. It's kind of my passion. You hear me? Please, I'll beg again, please donate your furniture goods and things. If you, if you would take it with you when you move, the Community Warehouse will take it because we have enough. We don't need to keep creating more landfill. We don't need to be creating more trash. We can, we can share a little.
Absolutely. Yes. Yes, thank you, John. Because of the number of the candidates and the tightness of time, we won't be opening it up, these roundtables to questions from the audience. We're hoping at the end, if everybody is patient and still wants to hang around, that we'll have a little time for that. So be patient. We are thinking of you and are hoping, hope we get to the things that you want to hear about. Ruben, one last question before we wrap up this table and I'm gonna grill you slightly.
Sure.
Getting back to investing in public safety.
Okay.
You know, police reform is very on the top of many people's minds. I know safety is also something that people are concerned about and have feelings about. What does investing in public safety mean to you?
Investing in public safety? So this past. Investing in public safety, so, this past year, and last year, we, me and my wife, we own a Kia, it was stolen twice. Someone set fire to our garage walking past on 33rd. So, the instances of public safety is, we need to manage and see how we can best police our city and provide immediate services. When we are talking about mental health, we, Measure 110, we took away punishment for drugs, small amounts, and we called it a mental health problem. We didn't backfill the minus, minus in the criminal penalty with enough mental health. Reinvesting in public safety, I would, and I haven't found a good way to really put this as of yet, but we need to examine true mental health care and, you know, possibly civil commitments, and what it is to help people that are mentally ill and on drugs that cannot help themselves. This fentanyl problem is really serious, and there are people that cannot control their own addiction and their own mental health when on that. The, how do we do that? We have to fill that, invest in beds, have mental health teams, maybe perhaps even our own doctors, like I mentioned previous question, to really, to really invest in, see what the mental health of these people are, are they able to care for themselves, are they able to fund themselves, you know, are they, are they really out there doing the best that they can? So, reinvesting in public safety, it's not only police, but mental health care, to really help those that are, that are beyond, beyond helping themselves.
Thank you. Great, so, we are in a shift, so now it's time for Ambush Morgan to come on.
Thank you so much.
We don't need it at all. We're super excited to be able to ask all of you all some questions. I think I'm gonna start.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm gonna just, you know, do the random. David, wonderful to meet you. On your website, you list your priorities. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I should just say. We're just gonna jump in. We've got two questions per person.
Right.
We're gonna be as quick as possible, but they are questions you will need to give a good answer to. I won't let you walk away without. Okay.
We have candidates go around and give their first and last names. Because we have a couple of people that are documenting, there's some videography happening.
David, pay attention to that.
So, we've got David Burnell here.
Yes.
And we'll introduce each one as we go, so people don't lose who they are. Thank you so much. David Burnell.
Yes.
On your website, you list your priorities as houselessness, public safety, cost of living, some of your priorities.
Yes.
How do you plan to address the contributing factors to these symptoms that you prioritize?
Excellent question. So, one of the things that I really believe that we need to do, especially with this new... Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Can everybody hear me?
He's working on it.
Okay.
I can be loud. I actually had to practice not being loud before I came here. So, one of the things that we really need to do in this upcoming city council is we have to start looking at the data. What happened? Where did we turn? What are we doing? And we have to look at the contributing factors to what actually contributed to all of this. And what I mean by that is we need to start looking at the things that City Hall has been doing up until we get there. Okay? And in order to do that, when you know better, you do better. And so, when you have that information, you can start tackling those problems. And that is, I think, is gonna be priority number one for us, is to look at the data and see what happened.
You've also mentioned stricter rent control as a solution to rising housing costs.
Yes, one of the many solutions, yes.
For those who don't know, what are the current rent control policies in place? And how do you plan to make them stricter?
Well, I know that right now... That's a good question.
Thank you.
Well, I know right now that rent control gets increased by certain percentages right now. I don't have the exact figure at this moment, but I do understand that stricter rent controls will help create more livable environment for families such as my... I am a single father, full-time single father, single parent, and I live and subside on one income. And like myself, rent is probably takes up more... They say that you're supposed to have rent, there's supposed to be only 1/3 of your paycheck, right? That is not how it works. I'm gonna tell you guys that right now. So, what I'm saying is when we have things like stricter rent controls... I actually lived in a facility, in a building with my kids for a while, where the rent was determined by your income. And that went so far in allowing me to be able to provide for my family the things that we need and basic rights and responsibilities that we have just being here in Portland. So, when I suggest things like stricter rent controls, what I'm suggesting is that we take a look at what rent controls are now. Like I said, gathering data and seeing why rent is so darn high around here, because not all of us realistically can buy a house. I can't. I can't afford a house here. I have to rent. So, when I say stricter rent controls, I'm talking about the average, everyday Portlander like myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mariah Hudson, did you have something else for me to say?
I was just gonna say that I think I may have made a mistake here and asked both questions at the same time.
I thought you did. That's okay.
Sorry, I got a third person, I got a third question for you.
Okay, alright, alright.
It's anime-related, so just move on. Alright, Mariah Hudson. Glasses here. On your website, you talked about helping citizens with addiction and houselessness. We just faced what is likely our first extreme cold weather of the season. Would you have handled the response differently and if so, how?
Yeah, so addiction and houselessness are kind of our twin crises right now in Portland and really in Oregon. And ensuring that we have not just shelters open, but at the right times, is truly essential. I know that the decision-makers in place were looking to metrics, but we also need to think about human metrics and to take a greater, you know, look at that in this particular case. You know, it was still icy out, it was not a good time to be in a tent, and that put people in dangerous situations here. So, yes, I would have. In terms of housing and addiction being my top priorities, they have to be, because those are the things that are impacting our safety and our livability here in Portland, particularly the addiction crisis and fentanyl. I'm in healthcare, I work at Oregon Health Science University, and I can tell you that is our top crisis here in Oregon, is addiction. And it's impacting safety, it's impacting people's ability to get out of, get out of a situation on the street into stable housing long-term. Yeah.
Okay. You mentioned that you would have done things a little bit differently. Are there a couple of things you could give as an example, as far as in response to, you know, the issue that we just had?
Well, to look at the picture, to step back and look at the bigger picture, we do need more shelter beds here in Portland. And it's not just one type of bed. We need small, you know, villages, we need temporary beds. So, the ability to scale up and have cold weather housing, warming shelters, is essential to have that capacity in the system to be able to quickly scale in terms of the decision-making to keep those sites open longer. I think, again, stepping back and looking at the human situation on the street, was it safe for people to be out? Was there transit that was available? I can tell you that, you know, hospitals operate 24/7. We have to. We have snowplows that keep those roads open. But that was not true for a large part of the city. And when we don't have the capacity here in Portland to deal with basically a climate emergency, then we do need to have the response in place to be able to shelter people and keep them safe.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, it's my turn. I'm gonna get this down. Brooklyn.
Yes.
Brooklyn Sherman, I'm sorry, I didn't know what to say. In discussing fixing Portland's economy, one of your solutions listed on your website is allow for more mixed-use zoning throughout the city where it makes sense, to allow the creation of more small businesses with less money while ensuring the charm of single-family neighborhoods can be kept. Can you explain what you mean by more small businesses with less money and how those neighborhoods would be able to retain their charm?
With small businesses with less money, I'm talking about businesses that don't have employees. Is this thing even on?
It's kinda...
Okay, okay. For instance, my family, we have a small business called Slapped...
We're getting there.
We're getting there. We, my family, we have a small business ourselves. We got no employees. It's me and my mom, we do everything ourselves. And that's what I'm referring to when I mean, you know, small businesses with less money. Businesses that don't have the capability to hire staff. And I have friends whose families also have LLCs, where that's the case. It's very common. And by allowing more mixed-use zoning, the idea is it allows people to use their homes partially for their businesses. I have a friend whose family used to run a dog-walking business and dog care out of their home, but because of zoning laws here in the town, they struggled to run that business. And eventually, they got kicked out of where they were. And then that's what I'm referring to by zoning laws, is I want to encourage more small businesses that can be more intermingled in our community. This will also help make our city more walkable, too, is if we have the more ma and pa shop, you know, in your neighborhood, so when you're like, hey, it's 8 o'clock at night, I wanna go get a drink at a pub, oh, the nearest pub, because of zoning laws, is half a mile away, you know, I don't wanna walk that 20 minutes. I want that 10-minute walk. That's what I'm talking about there.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is here, Jennifer. Jennifer Park. There, we'll take the notes. You've mentioned the importance of connected service networks and the collaboration it takes to achieve shared outcomes. In light of the reports of the city and the county not being able to agree on much, where is your strategy to get them to successfully collaborate?
Yeah, I think the big thing that I think of when I think of connected service networks is not just government-based, so city and county, which we do, like, the Joint Office of Homelessness, right? They had a disaster when it came to the warming centers because they didn't have that collaboration, right? So, we do need to repair that. And I'm also talking about like our nonprofits, right? Making them all work together. Right now, we're seeing so many silos, we're basically seeing gears spinning all on their own, but if we slide all those gears together, they're gonna help propel each other. And so, yes, I wanna see the city work better with the county, but I also wanna see, you know, community warehouse help with supportive housing. I wanna see the networks and the infrastructure that we have already working together to make everything easier for all of them, because we have so much here. And I've been in the nonprofit field for over a decade, and I know how those partnerships work. Right now, my nonprofit works with public schools, and I know how much we can get when we actually put these puzzle pieces that already exist together effectively. So, that's really what that priority is for me.
That's great to hear more...
I'm Jennifer Park.
That's, thank you, that's very reassuring to hear. I'm always encouraged when we're talking about engaging with more community-based organizations. So, thank you for that, yeah.
Okay, this is where my mistake bites me in the butt, because I already asked you your second question. So, you said you had a third one, so I'm gonna skip you for it just a sec while we get another question for you. And so, Mariah, I'm gonna come to you. Affordability and livability are important focuses for all Portlanders, and one of your suggestions is to eliminate inefficiencies to speed up permitting and build more middle and affordable housing. What does afford... I'm sorry, what does livability mean to you? And how will you ensure Portlanders that... Excuse me. Portlanders benefit more than developers do?
Yeah, so, livability means to me a safe community where people like me and not like me can afford to live. So, I'm a working, single mom to two PPS students, and we need a safe community where we have a good public safety response time. We can trust that that will be available there for us. So, that's what livability feels like. To me, it's also a clean city where we have our trash taken care of and vandalism isn't rampant. We can see it across our city, and frankly, it's an eyesore that puts a mark on Portland. And this is a great city, we don't deserve that. People feel unsafe because of those things, whether or not the statistics actually reflect that. So, to me, that's the livability piece. In terms of the housing piece to that, permits are a part of it. We did just have some code reform passed in August through City Council that I believe once that is fully implemented, will help move forward with building. In terms of ensuring that it's not just big developers, but also it's community members that benefit from the building that we're doing, there's a couple of things we can do. One is, we can look at if we can support the, you know, community development organizations that are already out there, places like Hacienda that are working to build and build equitably and ensure that communities that have been underserved for a long time are getting better access to housing. Another thing that we haven't done really here in Oregon is subsidize building in terms of, we could have private builders build and ensure that some of those units are at affordable level by creating a subsidy and with that, an incentive, if you will, to build more affordably and in the places we want. And we have some huge opportunities here in Northeast with the redevelopment of the Lloyd Center coming forward with Albina Vision, and I would absolutely support housing that's for middle and lower-income households in those places.
Okay.
We have 10 minutes, just let it out. David?
Yes.
What excites you most about this new form of city government? And how will you use it to benefit your district?
What excites me most about this new form of government is that the form that we have now is not only outdated, it also is inefficient. And due to the fact, I read somewhere, and I'm sure somebody will know what I'm talking about, I read somewhere that our current form of government is as if our United States Congress was running the IRS on a day-to-day basis. So, and you can see that, because what happens is, the way our current form of government is, it doesn't really allow them to be connected on a day-to-day basis with the communities, because they're busy. And the term, I like the term, because I also work in nonprofits, siloing, and we use that term a lot in nonprofits. There's a lot of siloing that's happening in our current form of government. So, our new form of government, I believe, will allow us the ability to actually listen, hear, and act on what the community wants, needs, and requires of a city government. So, that's what excites me the most.
I guess we'll go to Brooklyn. Actually, I'm joking. I'm not going to you, Brooklyn. Me and you, Jennifer. Say that again. I just didn't wanna make you wait and be the last one again. So, we all understand that we are experiencing a housing crisis, and some believe that this is unique to Portland. How has your experience working with the chronically homeless in San Francisco helped shape your view and strategies for Portland?
Well, I, the very cool thing about the organization that I worked for in San Francisco was that it partnered with the Department of Public Health. So, I think it's a really interesting model for us to explore here of that collaboration. So, the Department of Public Health actually leased private property and had a nonprofit do the property management and provided onsite support services so that people, once they were housed, they could have service right in their building. And it was a harm reduction model. I fully believe that one of the things that has been coming up with this fentanyl and drug crisis is talking about how do we scare people into getting treatment, instead of how do we say, we decriminalized this, but people still need to get housed, they still need to be able to be safe, we don't want them using on the sidewalks, right? So, housing first was our model, and I think we could do some really interesting stuff with that in Portland. And actually, last legislative session, the state passed a measure that allows the conversion of some commercial property to residential property. And if you think about the amount of vacancy in commercial property we have, like downtown, for example, it would be really interesting to think about what we could do to have government partnerships with private property owners, with nonprofit services to turn some supportive housing over really quickly.
Nice, nice.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice. Alright, Brooklyn, we're gonna close it on out. Okay. In addressing public safety, you said our city has been facing unprecedented levels of crime and safety issues in the past few years. Vehicle theft, shoplifting, and violent crime have grown in record numbers. You suggested solutions including establishing a municipal court to try low-level and traffic violations, along with increasing PPB recruitment and lobbying the state to amend Measure 110 to more adequately tackle the fentanyl crisis. In light of PPB reporting a decrease in crime overall, and the National Retail Federation retracting their report citing a drastic increase in retail theft, does that impact your current vision for the city?
I'm sorry, can we break that down a little bit more? So, let's start with the 110 and move down. So, about Measure 110, obviously, I want there to be something to help these people. They don't, people don't choose to become drug addicts. That's not a choice, this is a crisis that they have sadly gotten addicted. And obviously, we need to have a... They didn't phase it in correctly. And I am, I think what's gonna end up happening is probably we're not gonna have any form of Measure 110. But that sadly is, when I wrote that, it was still, it was still up for debate more around what was gonna happen with that. Sadly, I think the time on that has begun to pass. Moving on to the next thing on the topic, the list of questions you asked me, around crime. Obviously, what has happened is due to our lack of 911 operators, it has become harder in the lack of police officers. It's just become harder and harder for a lot of storefronts to engage with these low-level offenders, these people who are breaking their windows and are robbing from them. And when I was writing that, I was talking to a friend of mine who is a head of security at Target, at Lloyd Center for a long time, and he had a couple other friends who also worked there. And then we would all talk about how we noticed that they would always constantly lower the standards on when they would call the cops for someone robbing. It was first one number, and then they lowered it to another number, and just keep on going down till eventually it was just like, we're not gonna bother ever calling, ever. And obviously, that just harms the employees of these stores. And when addressing the crime problem, we have to understand that if we don't do anything about these low-level offenders, you end up just hurting the blue-collar workers at these storefronts, because someone has to show up at 3:00 AM and board up the window. So, that's why I believe that we should work on getting, you know, less militarized police officers, more local folks, and more 911 operators, just to help have eyes on the street to address these issues, because it's about eyes on the street. We just need people around to, you know, because people don't commit crime when someone's hanging out there. Moving on to the next thing...
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
You said people doing the robbing, and do you mean retail theft? Do you mean shoplifting? Because if someone robs Target, the police get called. If someone shoplifts, you know, some pajamas, they may not. But robbing is like by force. So, I wanna make sure that that's what you mean.
I'm sorry for my vernacular. I was referring to the stealing of property in general.
Shoplifting.
Shoplifting.
Thank you.
And moving down to the next portion of your question, which was after that, you were asking me what...
Well, it actually did close on the shoplifting portion.
Okay.
Because we did see recently that although Target did make claims that retail theft played a factor in the store closing, it was later reported that these are just stores that had lower traffic. So, I guess circling back around to that, understanding that there needs to be some response, that's still the reaction of it. I guess a better question would be, do you have any advice as to how we can prevent people from being in a situation...
More eyes on the street.
...in which they feel they need to shoplift. So, are there resources that we should be discussing that put people in a better economic place where shoplifting is less of an option?
Yeah, I wanna go back to what Dave was talking, rent control. I'm a huge fan of rent control. So, currently, how the state handles it is the state recently passed where you can't have rent go up on any residence that's over 15 years old by more than 10%. I think that's a great first step, and I want to go even farther. I want to implement that for all housing, not just over 15 years old, and I wanna lower it here in Portland down to 5%, where rent cannot go up by more than 5%.
Excellent.
Thank you all so much. We so appreciate you answering our questions.
A little bit of time to kick it over. A little bit of time to pick it up.
All right, everyone. Thanks so much. We are, we are ready to do our final round.
Yay!
Thank you.
Quiet coyote.
Yeah. Quiet coyote.
If you have any attention, please start the final round.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Welcome back. This is our last round. It'll be 25 minutes again, and I'm going to start the timer. And thanks for your patience. You've been a great audience. I think it felt like everyone's been real attentive and dealing with the sound issues. So I hope, I hope we can all be heard and, and we'll get something relevant going here. So I'll do a quick round of introductions for our group. We have Mark Kohler, Christopher Olson, Laura Stride, I'm not sure who's doing that, and, and James Armstrong. So we'll begin. Is it, I think, is it me gesturing? Sorry, I'll, I'll pull this out. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Okay. All right. So let's, let's start with Mark. Here on my left, we're going to go clockwise, just to keep things orderly. Mark, you've said that throwing money at affordable housing means that, quote, "Developers and big banks will continue to thrive at taxpayers' expense without solving the increasing problem of homelessness," and that a more effective solution would be a state bank. So can you explain the state bank to us?
Yeah, there are cities already on the country who appreciate the fact that all of our tax dollars that are going to developers is going through Wells Fargo Bank. And then the bank gets interest from the developers when they take their mortgages out. None of that money is coming back to us as taxpayers. If you think about the $650 million bond issue at Metro hat, all that money was given, basically, to developers to build affordable housing. I understand the process. But then, once that money is spent to them, none, none of those, and I, I think it's a good thing that we have more affordable housing. We know that there's a real shortage of housing right now. So building more units is definitely part of the, the situation. But if we, if we put that money through our own bank, basically, the interest in those loans and things would come back to us in tax revenue. And if you look at that $600 million that was spent, you know, there were several thousand units, but not a single person on the street was able to get into any of those housings. So it doesn't help the houseless. It helps, certainly helps, and I know some people have already talked about being, you know, middle-class, working families, single parents who are trying to afford housing. So those more affordable housings are good for that, but it doesn't really affect the houseless's problem. I don't know if that's your answer, but that's, that's.
That's great. Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Christopher Olson, thank you. So I think three days ago, it's announced that City Council is suggesting cutting $3 million from Portland Street Response, which is currently a responding organization that is already under a lot of pressures. We know it's very, the city and community are really supportive. What, how do you look at this problem? And what is City Council not getting? What is the budgeting issues? How, how would you address this? And I know you've talked a lot about Portland Street Response.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. And I think just, just to clarify, I think we were both at the last PSIP meeting near part of that committee.
I'm co-chair of the settlement and subcommittee.
Yes. And we both sat through the audit presentation that was done by, by Casey. And I think it was really eye-opening, just to see how much really this issue of the Portland Street Response has been politicized. It's not really about taking care of the houseless and those who are suffering from mental illness. It's about basically just coming up with a program that I think to, or, you know, try to appease, at least right now, the public in trying to address this issue. And obviously, there are people who are in charge of the, you know, of the Fire Bureau, and we'll just say it's just Rene Gonzalez Bureau. And there's obviously some politicization of the Portland Street Response. And instead of actually trying to address these issues, the City Council and Gonzalez, who's in charge of it, is just attempting to destroy this program, brush it under the rug, get rid of it for his own political means. So for me, I am more than happy, like, supporting the Portland Street Response. I want this program to expand. It needs to go 24/7 all over the city. We absolutely, it's absolutely effective. I did, took my time after the meeting to read the PSU study that was done on the second year of the program. It is, it is fantastic. They, they will definitely reduce the amount of police calls by, by a drastic amount. They said that 97% of their calls that PSR responded to in year two would have been sent to the Portland Police Bureau, which I think is incredible, because we don't need to be sending an armed response to these mental health crisis situations. I mean, I'm going to be honest, I have struggled with mental health issues. I have had my own run-ins with police due to that. And that was not a pleasant experience when being, you know, I was extremely anxious, and people didn't know, you know, what was going on. But thankfully, I, you know, I've been able to get all the street and everything. But having two armed police officers show up at your door really puts you even more on edge than you were before. So PSR needs expanded. We need to continue to fund it. We need to allow them to get, go into private residences and actually equip them to deal with these problems and solve these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, Laura Stride, you are an arts leader in the community. You, on your website, you talk about how the St. John's community has brought St. John's Closet back to life through investment and programming. Like, how, tell us about how that worked and how you feel like that strategy of community building could help the whole city.
Thank you. Oops. Thank you. You get me to talk about one of my favorite places. I've been a St. John's resident for over 20 years, 20 years now. And being part of the boosters has been a really great experience to continue investing in our neighborhoods. An example was our tree lighting ceremony and our ugly sweater themed all of our events that we do for the holidays. So our trees, the little ornaments are ugly sweater themed. We blocked off the streets this year, which several parents came up to me and said, "Thank you." For people coming straight off the bridge, they had to be rerouted around the main downtown of St. John's so that our community tree lighting event with all of our street vendors and the businesses around had a safe space for our kids to run around and go to the photo booth and make their own ornaments, driving people into our St. John's neighborhoods. Not only does it impact our businesses, which they're thrilled about, but it shows this great little corner of our city. When I took my kids to the tree lighting this year, as we were leaving, my oldest was like, "It's like our own Star's Hollow." And as a Gilmore Girl fan, she was just thrilled that it was this walkable, beautiful city. I couldn't get more than like five or steps, five or six steps down the way before talking to another community member or running into someone that my kids have gone to school with over the last 10 years. And so having those different kind of impacts. I have worked on the art walk in St. John's for the last several years, and it was really great, even after COVID, to see businesses be thrilled that so many people were engaged in walking around our neighborhood and buying things, eating things, meeting new artists, and just that whole collaboration and community feel was really strong. And we've got a lot of fun stuff planned this year for our ugly sweater events in the fall, including a Guinness World Record, so stay tuned. But yeah, just impacting communities. All of our businesses in downtown St. John's are small businesses, and I would say 80% of those people live in our neighborhood as well. So coming to St. John's and eating at the taco truck or grabbing a pint of beer at one of our top houses is keeping people in their homes, keeping people in their neighborhoods, being, investing in our community, so.
So how do you see that expanding to the rest of District 2 that you will also represent?
Yes. There is a Mardi Gras parade coming up on Fat Tuesday in Mississippi. A lot of, I think one of the reasons that St. John's has had its success is that we have a district manager through Venture Portland, and that person is paid through Venture Portland to help assist all of our business owners. And James can attest to this, too. If we didn't have Tanya as our district manager, the rest of us would be having to do this, volunteer on top of our own business things. And so having a dedicated person in our district to help us go for grants that can get more lighting or help with these different events. If every business district had someone, had a district manager that was supported through Venture Portland and Prosper Portland, I think that could really elevate all of the neighborhoods across North Northeast Portland.
Thank you.
Let's keep on that thread for a bit, James Armstrong. So you wrote an op-ed in the Oregonian last year about the struggles of small businesses. I'm really thankful for this newspaper. I'm learning more about the candidates they're talking to, so that's kind of awesome. Want to hear more about work you've done to help grow small businesses and what you think your role as a District 2 City Councilperson would be to solve or help small businesses stay safe and grow.
Yeah, thank you. I'm actually going to take the setup from Laura and just keep going. So I was the board chair of Alberta Bain Street here on Alberta Street for four years prior to the pandemic. And at that time, we had an executive director, Sarah Wittenberg, who did similar to what Tanya does for, for the Alberta Street neighborhood. And during that time, we saw Prosper Portland go from being very encouraging of what was happening on Alberta Street to really pulling back and kind of focusing more on their priorities. What we've seen in districts that don't have a district manager is you lose the sense of community. You lose the sense of small businesses being able to work together, not just on marketing things, but on safety and livability. In St. John's, we have basically a business owner's private message that just today was very active with some store owners that were single employee, and there was someone outside that was, that was, you know, having threatening behavior. There isn't a lot of county or city resources out in St. John's. So the local, small businesses have basically stepped up, and they've created their own network. And Tanya's a big part of that. The St. John's boosters are a big part of that. And what I've seen is that our city, through organizations such as Venture, such as Prosper, they do target areas that they can get behind, but they don't necessarily trust the people that are on the ground doing the work. And I've seen amazing community members in St. John's, in North Portland, on Alberta that do great work. And it'd be really nice if the city let them kind of do their thing and provided the resources that we, that they have through things like the interstate renewal, stuff like that. So that's what, I would like to see more trust in the people that are, that are on the ground doing the work.
Do you want to take the next Mark question to mix it up?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Great. So, all right, I'm sorry. I will stop trying to move in any direction. So, Mark, you have some very specific ideas about improving Portland's ability to manage addiction and mental health in the city. I think every single candidate so far has talked about this. Like to understand from your perspective, tell us about some of the programs and how you develop the strategies and what you can do from the city councillor position to keep promoting.
Yeah, one of the things we haven't talked about, and I think it's important to mention, and I will answer the question specifically, but the 12 of us who wound up becoming elected have to figure out how we are going to work together and how are we going to have a common platform of how we're going to solve these problems. Each individual has ideas, but it's one of the things that I think personally I bring to the table a little more is this ability to help people work together. My career was in organizational development and leadership training and team building and a lot of that kind of stuff. And we have, there's no question that, I believe, the 12 people who do get elected will be really good, strong people who care a lot about their neighborhoods. Particularly this District 2, we have a lot of diversity neighborhoods. I live on Hayden Island. We've done a wonderful job with the Neighborhood Association in terms of handling crime. Because like you said, once you guys get the neighborhoods together and the people get involved, that's how you're going to solve the problems. Clearly, the City Council that we've had in the past hasn't solved any of those problems in particular. So really, I think what's wonderful about this situation is we're going to be responsible to our neighbors, not just to the city. Everything has always been, it's all downtown problems, it's all downtown problems. Well, District 2 isn't downtown. We have wonderful neighborhoods. You know, everything from St. John's to Hayden Island, Alberta, we've got diversity, we've got the MLK, we've also got the University of Portland. It's very diverse. And we've got to get each of the neighborhood associations. There are 31 neighborhood associations in District 2. I love the St. John's Neighborhood Association. I try to attend there as well. But anyway, back to your question about, I have a family member who I spent three and a half years getting him on disability, even though his, for mental health services, even though he has a history since he was 18 years old of being treated, now he's in his 40s. Takes three and a half years of denials, denials, denials. Most of the people that we see on the street who are severely mentally ill, we know who they are. They're the ones who are screaming at the sky, whose pants are falling down, and, you know, those people can't wait three and a half years to get, and plus, they're not even capable of dealing with the system at all. So one of the things on my side, I do talk about an eight-point plan to deal with that, but, which we can't do now, but one of the major things, we've got to get people who can help them directly and say, okay, those people are qualified for services. Disability income for those people could be between $1,000, $1,200 a month. And with that money, they could be in housing. They could be getting mental health services. They can also get through Medicare, through Medicaid, through Oregon Health Fund, getting, you know, mental health services that are available, but no one's guiding them through that process. So one of the things we really need to do is really push the outreach to those people who are capable of, of getting better. Some of them, quite honestly, are not capable of living on their own. And someone mentioned the term before, and it's not, you know, you can't allow that person to spend 24 hours in an emergency room and then put him back on the street again. That's not solving that person's problem. It's not helping any of us. Because I think when you talk to most people about what bothers them about going into the city, is it's those people. It's the really extremely mentally ill people that we have to be focused on first. Then we can deal with some of the other issues, too. Those who have mental health disabilities that, yes, they could be employed. There are places like Goodwill, there are industries that can help people get jobs, but we don't have the social services workers. So one of the things we need to do is start training more of those people. You know, the community colleges and, and a lot of the nonprofits have the ability to, but we have to fund those people. You know, we talk about the money that's being spent. You know, we have a $5 billion kicker. We're all aware of that, right? That's going to go, most of it is going to go to people who don't need that money. If you pay $400,000 a year income, you're going to get a huge check. What are you going to do? You're going to go to Italy for a week? You're going to take a cruise? The people who are struggling, who are paid, they're the ones who don't get that. So I know they're, they're saying, oh, there's reasons why we can't get that. There are laws, there are restrictions. Well, let's change that. And I think that's really what I said in the beginning about having a common platform. That's one thing we should be forcing this city to deal with, is where is the money coming from? Where is the money going? How is it coming back to the citizens? How is it dealing, you know? That should be part of our collective platform that we all should get together, whoever is elected. Hopefully, it's even a process of building a platform. There are places like you guys and, and Portland Forward and others who are working on those kinds of platforms. Get us all to sign on and agree, because the only thing we can do, really, as a group, is interact with the mayor and the city manager to get them to follow our needs. So it's not just the business interests who seem to control, have had a lot of control over who was in our city councils and mayors before. So, long answer to your question.
Thank you. Good grant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Christopher, you testified in front of, testified, you testified in front of the state legislatures against the Rose Quarter Highway expansion. What's wrong with you? I want to get to work faster.
Oh, my gosh. Well, I'll just pivot then into, yeah, I'll just pivot into why I did that and, and what I think we should do. You know, obviously, if, and I said this in my testimony, that if adding more lanes solve traffic problems, LA would be the most traffic, most traffic-free city in the world. So one more lane is not going to do it, and we all know that. So we do need to look into expanding multimodal transportation in the city of Portland. So I'm for the Frog Ferry. I'm for trying to push TriMet to be free for all of our people. I think, I was just talking with John. Yeah, okay, cool. Free TriMet. I'm, I'm down. You know, I was talking with John earlier. It's like a 1% tax on everybody making over $150,000 would make TriMet free. And, 155, thank you. So that's the kind of stuff that I want to push to make sure that we can, this be a free transit. Because imagine if you're a business and you get to say like, oh, hey, yeah, you can come here and all your employees can ride transit for free to get to work. That's incredible. That'll push things forward. I rode the bus the other day. I'm lucky enough to have a job where they give me a free TriMet pass. But I'm like, these people that are hopping on my bus here, $2.50 or whatever it is, because I don't even know, because I have a free pass. Like, they don't, that's a lot more for them than it is for me. So we need to really push for that, that we'll have to work with Metro and we'll have to work with our counties to do that, but that's a big part of my platform. And then we also would like to build a network of urban trails throughout the city that does not rely on main thoroughfares. So it's offside streets and things like that. And that, so we would reduce our pedestrian deaths and reduce our biking, cyclist deaths. And we need, and be actually able to connect the city in a safe way. It is frustrating. Like, as, as someone who's taken up biking recently, I miraculously, well, not miraculously, but I got on an e-bike, like, in Hood River, and like, probably back in August. And it was the coolest thing. E-bikes are incredible. If you don't have an e-bike, get an e-bike. It is awesome. It can save you so much in your trips. So I would love to do an e-bike subsidy. I was looking into this. I mean, if we did 10,000 e-bikes, did about $400, which could be a good third of most costs of e-bikes, it would be only like $4 million. And we could get, take like 10, imagine taking 10,000 cars off our road every day. I mean, that would be incredible, just not to affect the environment. It'd be good for businesses, because people who don't have to find a place to park their car, they can just stop and, you know, just get off their bike and jump into your business. I've been doing that a whole bunch. I just, like, was coming here, I biked here, stopped by Roseline Coffee over on Alberta. I was like, I got a few more minutes, I can do that. Imagine if I had to park? I wouldn't even think about that. So like, these are the practical, you know, like, solutions that we can do to. the practical, you know, like, solutions that we can do to reduce the, you know, the traffic that is on our highways and make the city more livable for everyone.
Very cool. Thank you. Laura?
Hi. I, first of all, I appreciate the focuses on St. John's and the walkability. I lived out there, lived almost everywhere in Portland. So it's all, every district I've got a vested interest in because they're, they're part of me, right? I want to talk, go back to some of the more complicated things to solve for. And I'm saying they're all complicated, but in Portland Mercury, you said the city council will need to address the current trifecta of housing, mental health, and substance abuse as one strategy. I'm wondering if you can elaborate on that as a, currently, we have multiple strategies coming from different directions. What does a one-strategy solution look like to you?
Thank you. I would see a multi-strategy system looking like, listening to all of our partners in the mental health, housing, and drug enforcement arenas. We have, I think, 12 or more nonprofits that focus on housing, mental health, healthcare. We just got to go and be part of an information forum at Central City Concern a week or two ago. And Dr. Andy did a phenomenal job about talking about all the different ways they are helping so many people with mental health, trying to get them, even just regular healthcare that they need, finding them different avenues of housing. We need different, a whole array, whole portfolio, I guess, of services. We need temporary, we need supportive housing, we need long-term support. We have, there's the Canton Women's Village that has been very successful. We have a Safe Dress Village just off the Cut, just outside of St. John's in the University Park area. That is helpful. And there are, but that's only part of the problem. We still see so many people out on tents. So many people are, so many people in our community that need that extra support. But I don't think the current city council is listening to those experts. If we got everyone from Central City Concern, Transition Projects, I'm going to miss all the other names, but all those people in one room, they have so many great ideas. We've been talking about a home for everyone for the last 10 years in the city, and we need to actually follow our guidelines. Because I'm sure some of those are completely outdated after COVID. But we have real people on the ground in those different nonprofit organizations that are seeing results, and they're seeing what doesn't work. So we should actually have them at the table, because right now the city is not listening to them. So I think first up, we talk to the experts, we figure out a game plan, and we continue to check in with them to make sure we are implementing it properly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are down to our last question. I appreciate everybody's attention and patience, especially the little kids who are getting restless. I want to take a quick poll with hands. I think we've got two strategies right here at the end, after my last question to James, which is, do we want to set up a mic in the front and we'll take, we'll field questions and you can grab, you can ask one candidate and have them come up and talk? Or shall we just let the candidates loose amongst you and you can go talk to them and one-on-one and get a, get a better sense? So who wants a mic out in front of the room? Raise your hand.
Have a panel of candidates with different ones to respond.
Sorry, that, say that again?
Have, have like, you know, 30 seconds, but different candidates can respond to that question.
Here, let's, let's do this. Let's just all come up here as the candidates, and then we'll have a mic for people to act.
Yeah. That's already, okay, all right. All right, well then, well, let's put our hands down now. Who would like, should we just let the candidates free to come talk to you in the audience? All right, it looks like we have interest in a, in a, having the candidates speak on mic and get a question. So, thank you, and that's, that's my mic making noise again.
Just not that way.
Yes. All right, so James, thank you. Thank you for your patience. The, the question I had prepared for you was about your position on crime and safety. I think, we've kind of already talked about that a lot tonight. So what I'm going to instead throw at you is a freebie and to say, what makes you a different candidate? What, you know, why, what, what makes you unique in this, in this situation? Because that's what we're all trying to figure out here, right?
Right. So one surprising thing to me, when you kind of look at the city councillors that we've had in the past couple decades, is you don't see a lot of people that are really representative of the small business districts. Why do we like Portland? We like the restaurants, we like the bars, we like the music. I don't think anybody says, oh my gosh, the office building downtown, or why I came to Portland. You know, I, I've been a small business owner on Alberta Street for over 10 years. We also opened a clinic in St. John's and one on, on MLK. So I feel like my connection to the neighborhoods in this new districted representation form, I can represent our district. And then I have the, the kind of unique side caveat that my other profession is as a forensic accountant. And that's, when I've been talking to voters, that's the one that kind of perks them up because I think a lot of people have thoughts about their taxes, what kind of results they're seeing. I think we're really lucky that in a city like Portland, we're not afraid to pay taxes. But I think people are really curious when story after story comes out about money sitting in different places. PBOT, you know, facing $30 million of cuts, while other bureaus seem to have money they don't know what to do with. So there's no question that what I do in my profession is analyze complex financial matters and try to provide solutions. And I do think, when you look at where we are today in the city of Portland, I may be a unique candidate for, for solving some of those problems. Thank you.
Ambush? You're on.
Everybody move it once. We're going to set up these two mics right here in the walkway. One for the audience, I'll be on the audience mic. So if you have a question for the candidates, please just line up behind me. And then the other mic on the opposite end will be for the candidates.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
On the table back there?
Okay. Is it going to be for like, any, anyone or someone specifically?
Candidates who were just up here. There is a little notebook journal friend.
Definitely feel free to just take this off the stand.
I just want to say, okay, so I think we're about to get ready. I'm going to get out of your shot in just a second. I promise you that. I just wanted to say that we, you know, you can see us. We've moved some things around really quickly. I think best thing to do is just to say, hi, my name is, I have a question for, so that person can come to the mic. Yeah?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Okay.
All right. And we, again, we are sharing this space with our audience on YouTube. So please try to be cognizant of the cameras when you're taking your, you're doing your photography and all that. All right, cool.
I have a, I have a two-part question. I might not tell you my name until the second part. I want each of you to answer this. If you're elected to city council, who is the largest minority that you will represent in this city? Who is it? Go ahead.
I think it's the accessibility community.
Very good. Anyone else?
I want a piece of this question. So I believe that I am, on a day-to-day basis, I am a drug and alcohol councillor. And that is the community I will be representing, the substance use community and recovery. That is my.
Okay, that was not the question, but that's fine. So let's move on.
That is a minority though in this, in this city.
Here's my second part, the question. Please don't interrupt me. My name's Tiana Tozer. I'm the lead plaintiff on the ADA lawsuit. The largest minority here in Portland is people with disabilities. We represent 12%. We are the largest minority population, and yet our mobility has been consistently taken away from us because of this camping. How are you going to help your, one of your most vulnerable populations regain their mobility? We live here for that. What are you going to do about the tents and tarps on the sidewalks?
My name's Jennifer Park. Thank you for your question. So I think when I, tents and tarps on the sidewalk, those people need somewhere to go. So we need to put them in houses, or shelters, or somewhere. And then we need to clean up the streets. And then we need community engagement that is genuine and equitable, where we are coming to our groups who need representation and saying, how is the city not serving you right now? Right? Is it transportation needs to become more accessible? Is it the city infrastructure needs to become more accessible? Is it our buildings that need to become more accessible? So you'll see on my website, one of my priorities is equitable community engagement, and that's what I mean, right? There will be certain things that we will come and say and do, but until we know specifically what that minority community needs from their own lips, we can't address it in a way that is genuine to you.
Okay, Greg, did you want to say something?
Sure. My name is John Middleton. I'll get a little bit personal here. I'm on my second marriage. Very, very close to my first wife. Nine months after we got married, she was in a car accident and was paralyzed from about T2 down. We currently, at that time, lived in Portland, had to move to Salmon Creek because it was the only place that had an apartment that a wheelchair could fit in. Not that it was accessible, but that it could fit in. I do feel frustration because there's a lot of reasons and it would take a long time, and I'm more than willing to sit and talk with you about it. But we have to really pay attention to how we remove people from the street and where we let them go and let them be and all that stuff. But it is a very important thing. My next-door neighbor is a quad. And they put in 12 years ago to get curb cutouts put at the top of our block. And it took them 10 years to get curb cutouts. So when we look at things like the processes that we use in the city and where and how our money is spent, we need to be able to provide those services on a much faster and better scale. And when we talk about, like, everyone likes to say bike lanes and transportation, all that, I am very happy that we support bikes in Portland. And it's a great environmental thing. But you can't drive a wheelchair down a bike lane. And si, and you can, but it's very dangerous and hard. And you can't, you're not nearly as visible because you're down here, okay? There's some real rational thoughts behind this. Having sidewalks and well-lit streets for pedestrians and cars to see the people that are, well-lit streets for the people driving cars to see them, and bus lanes for buses to move around quickly. And maybe we don't need so many big buses when there's few people riding them. We can do things different, and we can definitely do things better. And I appreciate that question because having that life experience, you start realizing just how much we overlook everyone else that is just not like us. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that response. Just, I want to do a little education piece here, and we should move on to the next person.
We're going to, I'm sorry, I don't mean, excuse me. Excuse me, I'm sorry, we have to, just to get me, should we get everyone else in?
Okay. Oh, I was wanting to respond to the question as well. Okay.
Hi, my name is Tara. I would love for everyone to answer this question. And a very brief answer is fine. I know we have a lot of questions coming up. I would like to know, what is your position on Palestine? And if you'd like to expand, how you would relate that to your role in city council?
Ceasefire now. I'm the first, and, well, it wasn't until John just did it, was the only candidate in District two that called for a ceasefire. And I completely believe that. I would definitely like to see us disinvest from the military industrial complex so that we would no longer be funding genocide around the world. That'd be really great. And I'll just, and there.
I would just like to make one quick answer to your question. I'm on the Progressive Party, which is normally known as the Peace Party. So I think you have a pretty good idea where I stand on that. Palestine is a very difficult issue. I, I don't know if I'm the only member of the, Jewish person here, but it's a very difficult question to answer. But yes, I, you know, they, they talk about engagement in the rules of war. And I think the only rule should be no war. So, you know, but it's not an issue we as, as citizens are going to be able to affect all that much. But to me, that's the answer, is no war. And I just wanted to make one quick question, answer to the earlier question, just which group do I represent most? The most, the fastest growing part of the population becoming homeless are older women, single older women. 43% of the homeless people that are coming now to the party are older, single women, basically divorced, widowed. And that's a, that's an important criteria for me as well.
Okay, in, oh, are we also supposed to do that? My stance on war, on everything, is the humans, human rights declaration that the United Nations put together. So Palestine, the civil war in Ethiopia, things that are happening in Syria and Yemen, in Ukraine, and even what is happening in our own, in our own country.
So I, I remember when that question came out on Instagram. So I, I want to put this out. I am the adopted son of Jewish parents. I do not agree with how Israel is handling the war. All that's going to happen is it's going to cause more attrition. I think that what is happening in Gaza, while in the beginning was justified, what is happening now is not. How they are interacting and how they are doing, are interacting and planning out and plotting out this war is wrong. And that's my official position. So.
So I would, I would encourage everybody to, on their feelings, everything's local. So if you feel that an international issue is important to you, act locally, demonstrate that, act locally, so the world can know. A ceasefire is, is inevitable eventually. When, when 9/11 happened, Dick Cheney made a speech that there will be no peace negotiations, there will be no nothing. And then eventually, 20 years later, after war, we signed a peace treaty with the Taliban. So I would encourage it faster because of its inevitability, and that they should look and do that as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Can I go? Okay.
Yeah, I would love for everyone to answer. I don't need a lot of explanation. You could just make a very brief statement.
I will make it brief. I think the.
No, you're at the mic. If you want to go ahead, Jennifer, just do that, and then we're going to move on to the next question.
All right. I think that the innocent, or the slaughter of countless innocent civilians is unacceptable. And I believe there should be a ceasefire. I would be curious to talk to community members like you, to hear what you think the city council and the new city council can do to support that.
And in asking questions, I think it's important to say, this question is for anyone to answer. But to require everyone to answer it is just not going to be efficient. And you know, we want to make sure we're cognizant for people behind us. Yeah.
Okay, so I have a strategy. If climate change is one of your top five platform priorities, step forward. Okay, it's not exactly clear who's forward, but now I, we can see who goes to the mic. So give me three, in 10 seconds or less, give me three top actions you will take on that issue.
That's pretty, for me, I think, cleaning up the money, auditing the programs and how we use them. And then instituting with that extra money, as I'm sure is there, and the broken systems, because I'm sure they're there, we can start making ourselves much more efficient. And the less services and stuff we use cuts down on all kinds of things. and the less services and stuff we use cuts down on all kinds of things.
So I think we have to focus on where the city of Portland has the ability to make changes. So that includes building codes and programs. We have huge opportunities for energy efficiency. That is the cleanest and best way to lower greenhouse gases. And then renewable energy, and also just using in our waste systems and reuse of resources, those are huge opportunities that are still on the table that we should be exploring.
Yeah, I'll say as a former sustainability officer and chair of the Portland Bureau of Transportation's Budget Committee, transportation is a huge thing here in Portland. I think ensuring the connectivity of our system between bikeways and public transit and ensuring flow of traffic is really key to that. Also, we just went through a huge climate change, event that's symptomatic of climate change, and we need to build for resilience. That includes building our physical infrastructure, and it includes building into our communities and our public health systems responses that are at the measure of what we need for climate change. Thank you.
I actually drive a bus. I work, I'm a member of ATU 757. And the first thing is, we constantly are told at ATU, the solution is these electric buses. So at Portland Public Schools where I work, we got three electric buses, and two of them broke down within a week. These things do not work. I'm sorry, I wish they did. They don't work. They weigh way more, and the companies that make them don't make them well. What we need to do is, we need to have, encourage TRIMET and Portland Public Schools to have their bus yards scattered throughout the city more? Because currently, all of them are north Portland for the most part. So what this does is, every morning, when all the buses for Portland Public Schools and for TRIMET, when they want to start their routes, a lot of them have to drive 100 miles to Southwest Hills before the route starts. This is very fuel inefficient. What we need to do is, we need to start complaining to Metro and to Portland Public Schools, hey, you guys own land in other neighborhoods. Why aren't you guys having your bus yards more evenly distributed? Electric buses are not going to be the solution.
Yeah, I'll be really fast. So like I was talking earlier, an e-bike subsidy to get 10,000 e-bikes onto our streets so that we could take about 10,000 cars off the road. That'd be phenomenal. Also want to tank the tanks over at the CEI. That is a huge problem. Those, they're on a liquefaction zone. So basically, if we have the big one, we're all dead. I mean, it's really that bad. So those need to be removed, and the infrastructure needs to be changed. We need to petition the state for that, and also not have back deal, broom deals made with Zenith and other people like that. Lastly, just the urban charter that I was talking about, to have those e-bikes ride on. So, there you go.
Go for it, Jim.
Jim Labby, District Two resident. I've been working with a growing group of residents since 2018 to bring participatory budgeting to Portland. It's a democratic process, which in ordinary Portlanders could allocate a portion of the public budget by buying vote that would lead to the government implementing the investments or the projects. It's, it's being used all around the United States. Portland's the only city on the West Coast to not have a municipal program. Ted Wheeler campaigned on it in 2016, and he didn't deliver. The city council's been evasive. The Charter Commission, including, they were, Senate put together a proposal, sent to the city council. They've done nothing with it. We're going to the voters directly in the campaign. I'm curious, what do you know about participatory budgeting? Do you support it? If you're interested in it in our campaign, please come see me. But I would love to note, get just a sense of who knows about it, who supports it. Thanks.
I'll jump in right away. Yes, I definitely support participatory budgeting, or PB, as they like to call it. Been to some training sessions, and I'm really excited because it involves the community and gives community voice into a percentage of our budget.
I would just say ditto. I agree with all of that. And I was very happy to support it on the Charter Commission and send it to the city council. And I've been very disappointed that it's just kind of died. So we have to take it to vote, and that'll be the way to get it to happen here.
Yeah, I absolutely support it. I support your measure, and I also signed up to go to your conference on, like, in like two weeks. So I will go there, check that out. I don't know, what's your website name? Okay, pborgan.org. Go check the stuff out, it's fantastic, and also, like, go to the conference, it's great.
Just a quick statement. If we do have a platform for the new city council to address you, it will definitely be on the platform, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, we're going to take these last three questions and cap it there. Thank you.
Well, I guess my question is for Ruben because it was the only time it came up. So you mentioned, sorry, my name is Kara, District Two resident. You mentioned commitment of folks who are mentally ill, who have drug addiction, and considering the history of that sort of thing, especially when it comes to the fact that, you know, most of the folks, a large portion of our people who live on the streets are minorities, are people who are disabled, things like that. And the history of forced commitment, which was predominantly focused at minority, disabled, considered unwanted parts of our society, and the lack of facilities to commit these people to, to begin with. Like, how are you squaring the, first, the human rights issue? And second, where would these people even go?
So thank you for that. It is a very charged subject, and when I do bring it up, civil commitments, it's got a terrible history. Agreed. A lot of these people just need help. There are responsibilities from the state for the Oregon State Hospital that's just not being met. There's not enough beds. There's, oh, the need is always greater. We need to get that up to par where we could do that. I worked for Luuk Dorf, which is a mental health organization primarily out in Washington County. They should change their names. But they are doing residential programs for PSRB-released mental health patients that are released from the state hospital, and they go into community housing where they have on-staff psychologists, case managers, life skills training. So if we can model that sort of system where we have community-based housing, mental health professionals, you know, we could spend a lot of money on these big hospitals and for immediate need, that's, that's a good idea. For long-term need, if we were to get community-based housing, one, if those programs dissolve, you can sell the asset. The housing does not generally lose value. But you can readily make these homes into places where they can meet with a psychologist, they can meet with recovery people, they can learn how to cook and care for themselves, do all those things that we don't necessarily recognize, take, take learning and, you know, take practice when, when you finally do get housing. So that's, I would agree. You know, I believe we're going to need our own psychologists and psychiatrists here in the city, and the, the street response team is a good place to start and put those people to really parse out the people that can go into recovery or that, people that really need mental health. And then there should be protections, you know, in that commitment process, of course, you know, judges. But how do we streamline and create a system like that, that, that it's not pervasive against minorities or, or just people that are trying to be, exist? So, thank you.
Yes, Deanne Salzour, candidate for Portland City Council, District One, and also participatory budgeting as well, as in that. And so the question I have for you is this. So I serve on the Oregon Commission on Autism as a social services co-chair, and one thing the commission has recently gotten a report on is how 30, 40% of the national homeless rate, this is national, has some form of ADD. And that also means, because of the work that I do, that, that means they also lay the lack economic opportunity. So what sort of job training programs or policies are you guys going to do to ensure that you can get good, blue-collar jobs after getting into shelter and detoxed, housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so they don't just go through the cycle again? Thank you.
All right. I thought I'd step in quickly just because I have an interesting kind of connection to that specific question. In the optometry world, there's a program called Sweeps in Eugene that is specifically that type of workforce training. They make the glasses, provide them for most of the Medicaid programs in Oregon. I think programs like that are fantastic. And there's lots of other opportunities to find programs like that, work them in with our, with our Medicaid, with our fee-for-service through Care Oregon. I think there's a lot of great opportunities. So I'd love to talk more about that.
I know that there are some really great organizations locally that are doing job trainings, like Relay. And I think that if we can, again, connect those services all together to streamline that process for the individual. Right now, we have a system where an individual has to go out and find every single step of the process on their own and have the ability to manage all of that organization when they are experiencing something very traumatic to begin with. I mean, that would be hard for many of us when we have a lot of privilege to begin with. So once they get into housing, can we just connect them right to the services they need? Is that healthcare? Is that mental health care? Is that substance support? Is that job training? Is that finding a job? Is that getting permanent housing, right? But being able to just help them through the process instead of the individual needing to do every single step of the way on their own, right? Right now, it's even, they might go one place for healthcare and another place for meds and another place for psychological support and another place for drug support, and nobody knows what's going on between them. So it's really putting all of those things together to smooth that out. We want to make it as easy as possible on the individual. So again, maximizing what's already happening.
I would say there are a lot of organizations within Portland that are doing those services, wraparound services. My friend ran, ran a company like that, that placed people with difference learning in jobs and then also helped provide wraparound services for them. There are also different wraparound service and cultural organizations like ERCO and Latino Network and Impact Northwest that are doing those kinds of things. So I think if, as a city council, we can elevate those wraparound services that already exist and lean into the experts, we can help solve those issues.
Well, I think in Portland, living wage jobs are really important so that people can stay in our city and continue to afford rent and, and be located here. And having union members who are on our city jobs is an important piece of that to ensuring that there's high quality of that work and also that those are living wage jobs for people who can stay here in the city. And I would also mention the Portland Clean Energy Fund is a source for jobs and apprenticeship and training and, you know, minority-owned businesses to engage with that. And we should definitely support that and continue it as our city. Thank you.
I would just like to add that something that I want to work on as a city counselor is piloting a universal basic income program. We're... Oh, fantastic, great. Yeah, I think that, so we can help people throughout the, our, all of our communities, making sure that they have at least a standard of, of living that they can have and with no strings attached on that money, as long as we just know where, that you're in need of it, we'll, we'll give it to you. So I want to make sure that we do a pilot of that when we get started on the new government.
By the way, firstly, with the tents, where did you want to enter before? No, no, we're...
I didn't want to answer since I know we've talked about this already, so I felt like that would be a little unfair. But, but yes, I, I agree with a lot of what these other folks have said, that we need to address these issues for people who have, you know, autism, dyslexia, who are on the spectrum. And another thing we have to keep in mind, as someone who works in a sped department at Portland Public Schools, is this stuff's hereditary. So something we often forget about is kids with severe autism, their parents also have severe autism, oftentimes. Thus, when we're addressing these kids, we can't be like, oh, well, someone at home is going to be able to fill out the paperwork for them. That's not the case. And I see that on the daily, where if I have a kid who's struggling with keeping their schedule, I then call up the folks. Their parents struggle with keeping their schedule. So we have to understand that when addressing mental illness, oftentimes they're surrounded by other people who have similar problems. And thus, we have to make sure we send people in to help them.
So considering that we send $10 million to Israel, the city of Portland sends $10 million to Israel every last year, a ceasefire is a local issue. So I just want to see, show of hands, who would support a ceasefire? All right, thank you.
So thank, thank you all. Thank you all for your time. Please put your hands together for the candidates. And, you know, thank you for participating. Without the voices of the community, what's the point of doing any of this? Morgan, do you have some words to close on? Okay, all right. Well, I thank Levante Community Center. Thank everyone for helping organize this. Shout out to X-Ray. And I hope everyone has a safe trip home. All right.